I'd like to call this Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, March 10th approximately 4:06. If you would call roll please.
Duranchek.
Here.
Big Eck.
Here.
Koonin.
Here.
Garrett.
Here.
Tilly.
Here.
Lutz.
Here.
Krieger.
Yes.
All members present.
Very good. Stand for the invocation and the pledge.
Lord God, our heavenly Father, master of all creations, we come before you this afternoon seeking your guidance, wisdom, and direction. Lord, we ask that you will lead and direct this board to work for this county, grant them knowledge and understanding of the needs of this community. We ask that you will give this Board of Commissioners strength, dignity, and honor to work for the common good of all. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we have the minutes. There were two meetings on February 10th and February 17th. What is your pleasure?
Motion approved.
Support.
Any discussions? No discussions. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we're into citizens input. If anyone liked to come up and address the board, now would be the time to do it.
My name is Marty Murphy. Chairman Krieger, I want to thank you for the follow-up letter you sent me from my last meeting here. But I don't think that you know the severity of the activities at Charlie Brunner's daycare center. They are becoming a childhood senior citizen center over on Fremont and also the Center Plaza on Center Avenue. First of all, I'd like to...
Can I just ask you a question? You said Charlie Brunner's...
Representative Charlie Brunner.
Okay.
He is on the board of directors also with several other prominent members of the community. I would tell I will address that later at a different meeting, which I think is important.
Go ahead.
First of all, let me just play you just a small section of the tape that I played last time. Just a little bit. Just a second.
I've been making certain phone calls, and I need to hurry up. So, you give me the list, and I will get you some answers. I promise you, you're right.
I've had many talks in the background. I didn't think that this was a public, was a proper place for it. That's why I talked to Charlie on many occasions in the past in private. But obviously, nothing's being done, and we need to protect the children of Bay County. So anyways, with that said, I received a letter from the House of Representatives Democratic Conns. It says, "Mr. Murphy, 45 Republican Drive, Bay City, Michigan. Mr. Murphy, please refrain from sending informants in cemetary letters to private and public individuals that contain misleading and knowingly untrue statements about Representative Charlie Brunner. The harassment nature of these emails must stop. Representative Brunner has repeatedly answered your questions. Additionally, most of your accusations do not need to be addressed. As you know, they are false and distorted. You clearly are doing this to malign Representative Brunner's reputation. Although public officials like Representative Brunner are and must be subject to extensive inspection and discussion of their character, one cannot maliciously and knowingly spread falsehoods to anyone. Please cease your harassment." Well, I responded by saying that if my statements are true and that I have documentation to prove that I have four to show where I might get clues from. And that was from Patricia Prongley, Legal Counsel of the Democratic Caucus at Michigan House of Representatives. That's pretty serious business. You know, the Michigan Democratic Party attorney sent me a letter to cease and stop it. And I asked her for the letters that supposedly, the answer that Representative Charlie Brunner gave me, she did not respond. And that if I made a false statement, I'd be clearly glad to, you know, rectify my statements. And so I would ask you, maybe the call of represent, anyone in the chair or commissioners, call Representative Brunner. And if Marty Murphy is spreading falsehoods, sue him. Sue me. Anyone should not be saying statements that aren't true about Representative, or anyone, especially how serious the accusations I'm going to divulge. So if you would call Representative Brunner and say, "Look, you know, if Marty's slandering you, sue him. If not, give us the answer that you say that you've given Mr. Murphy because he's given me none." Okay? And over the next few months, I will demonstrate to you that Peggy Watson Condon, who is the director of the daycare centers, knew of employees' drug use, that Peggy Condon lied to state inspectors, that Peggy Condon lied under oath. And Peggy Watson Condon filed false police reports. Peggy Watson Condon had employees lie to state inspectors. Peggy Watson had employees lie to parents, both their children. And then after that, now at this meeting, we'll talk about the money, the money that is questionable to spend. And then after that, we're going to talk about the board members. But I'd like to tell you one of the stories that I was talking to Charlie Brunner about. A person came up to me and told me what they saw. I said, "Charlie, this is what I heard. I heard that Richard Watson, who's an employee, also the son of Peggy Watson, who is the director, was called into Peggy's office, into the daycare's office. They were screaming and yelling inside. Richard left the office, went outside, climbed on top of the hood of the daycare vehicle, ripped the mirror off." This is what I was told. I said, "Charlie, can you please check into this? The car was supposedly repaired today in Ford." Charlie tells me, "No, that's a family issue." I said, "Well, wait a minute, Charlie. A family issue? This..." And he said, "Yeah, it was between a mother and a daughter, a mother and a son." I said, "Charlie, this happened at a daycare, at a place employed. This happened between the director and the employee. It happened, the ripping off the mirror happened on a daycare center's vehicle. That is not a family issue. I couldn't care less if people go home and smoke marijuana with their children or drink cocaine. I couldn't care less. But when we're talking about people who are protecting their children, they should be held in a different standard. And that home activity should not come into work." Okay? So that's what I'm kind of upset with Charlie Brunner. And I also said, "Charlie..."
Mr. Chairman, could you ask Mr. Murphy how much longer he's going to go? I don't believe we have a time limit, but I mean, if we're going to go on and on and on and on, maybe we need to set one, so...
It'll only be a few minutes. I understand that. We have two more things I want to talk about, and then I won't take much more time. I don't think the whole thing would have been more than five minutes, I have, which is a standard procedure.
It's been more than five minutes. All right.
And I understand that Charlie's your good friend, and that you don't want his stuff put out.
Marty, Marty.
Well, these are my, this is my grievance, and I have a right to address it. And when it's someone that's trying to stop me from addressing my grievances to protect the friendship, I think that that should be brought up. I mean, it would be different if he wasn't a good friend to Charlie Brunner.
We do have other programs, but I'm saying to you, go ahead and finish your statements.
Oh, thank you. Then I also received a sexually explicit text message from an employee regarding one female with a male employee that asked Charlie if he'd like to see that. He said, "No," he didn't care about that. And then also, Richard Watson, the state agency came in and said, "Richard Watson is not fit to watch children. He can't be in the daycare center." So, I hear that Richard Watson was working at the daycare center. I said, "Hey, Charlie." I said, "I heard that Richard was delivering food and shoveling this on Watson's daycare center." And he says, "That's okay." He says, "He's not dealing with the children." I said, "Wait a minute." I said, "Here is..." And he's doing maintenance. "Here is someone supposedly on drugs, does drugs, but the state agency said he shouldn't be there watching children. Something doing maintenance that drugs." And then we can show you pictures of the maintenance later on. Also, let's say he decided to do some cocaine in the car, and that he spilled cocaine on the brakes that were supposed to be for the children. And Charlie said, "That's speculative." I said, "You're right, Charlie. We don't know what drug users will do. You know, so, you know, he should not, he should not be delivering food for the children. He should not be working at the daycare center." So, I plan on, you know, coming back, and that's pretty much what I wanted to say this week, I would ask each one of you to call Charlie Brunner and ask him, you know, what lies, what lies are Marty telling? And if Marty is telling lies, encourage him to sue him. So make sure Marty's all this issue. Because obviously, everyone's turning a lie eye to the children and not protecting them, which is sad. I mean, we should protect the children. I mean, this is mild, what's it, this is very mild. So, well, you have a good day, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to approach? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Tom Dooley. I'm applying to be appointed to the Bay Air Act, the head of health authority. I've worked in that particular field for close to 35 years. I retired three years ago from Bay Air Act, after 25 years with the agency here, and that experience would be useful on you. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else wish to address the board?
Mr. Chairman, Brandon Carl's Register of Deeds. As you guys know, you guys approved a opportunity to be involved for RFPs for a scanning project that the Register of Deeds is scanning all 495 of our books, archived books. We put that out of RFP, the bits came back, we opened them up, and there was quite a price difference between all the bits. But we did come down, we let the latter, a little over two bits, come in and physically do some testing for us and some scanning. We checked their product, we checked their quality, we saw that they could do what they're capable, and they meet the deadline that I had set, and we ended up on with the US imaging for that project. So, we look at doing that project coming up, probably the bid out of the end of this month, and we're going to go forward with that. Excited about that. So, what that means for the public is all land record documents here at Bay County will actually be online, and you will actually have physical, or be able to physically pull them up from your computer at home. So, we're very excited about that, Register of Deeds.
Very good.
Any questions?
Commissioner Koonin.
Going forward, Brandon, the new documents that are generated, do they have to be kept both electronically and/or do you need to have a paper copy of them?
New documents that come in, we receive them, and we make sure they meet required requirements, and if they do, we hold them, scan them the next day, and once we scan those, we mail those back to the originator. So, the original, that's the original document. We only keep scanned images.
Good.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else? That being said, we'll move into presentations. And we have Eric Palm. If you want to introduce yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Krieger and Bay County Board of Commissioners for inviting me here today to recognize the Bay County Farmers Verified through the Michigan Agriculture and Environmental Assurance Program, also known as MEAT. I would also like to thank the verified farmers for investing their own time and resources into making changes on their farms that not only protect themselves and their own families, but also their neighbors, communities, and ultimately, the great lakes. My name is Eric Palm, and I am the technician who covers both Saginaw and Bay Counties. For those of you not familiar with MEAT, it is a comprehensive, voluntary, and proactive program designed to reduce farmers' legal and environmental risks. The farm is broken down into its three major components. On the farmstead, we take a look at things such as pesticide, fertilizer, and fuel storage, and the respective distances away from surface and lower. The cropping system reviews nutrient records, pesticide records, and soil tests. The livestock system focuses on appropriate manure and storage and utilization. The farmstead and cropping systems alone have more than 300 individual questions pertaining to best management practices. After making the suggested changes to their farm, after the site visit is complete, ensures that in the event of a right-to-farm complaint, so long as they are following the MEAT guidelines, the producer can quickly prove they were in compliance. Due to the vast differences in soil types, topography, cropping systems, livestock systems, et cetera, I can't say that getting MEAT verified is easy. But I can say that the producers who are MEAT verified either invested a significant amount of time and capital in making the necessary changes for verification, or, which is more often the case, the producer was already doing the right things in the first place. The producers here today represent over 5,500 verified acres, five verified farmsteads, and each grow a multitude of field and vegetable crops. And more verifications will soon be on the way, as there are more than 50 additional farms in Bay County working on becoming verified in at least one of the MEAT systems. I hope that everyone listening today now has a better understanding for the MEAT program and also a better understanding of what your local producers are doing to protect the environment. To the MEAT verified farmers here today, I commend you for all that you've done, and thank you for being leaders in your community. Thank you.
Very good. Madam Clerk, if you'd read Resolution 2015-44.
Resolution 2015-44 by the Bay County Board of Commissioners, whereas, the Michigan Agriculture and Environmental Assurance Program, MEAT, is an innovative, proactive, and voluntary program that helps farmers of all sizes and commodities voluntarily prevent or minimize agricultural pollution risks. And whereas, this comprehensive, voluntary, proactive program is designed to reduce farmers' legal and environmental risks through a three-phase process. One, education. Two, farm-specific risk assessment. And three, on-farm verification that ensures the farmer has implemented environmentally sound practices. And whereas, the program's three systems, farmstead, cropping, and livestock, each examine different aspects of the farm. And whereas, after becoming MEAT verified, the farm can display a MEAT sign specifying that the farm is environmentally assured. And whereas, the Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development, M D A R D, Michigan Agriculture and Environmental Assurance Program, MEAT, is recognizing 33 Michigan farms for implementing appropriate pollution preventive practices, and six farms are located in Bay County. Whereas, the Bay County farmers are Brian Schwab, Brian Schwab Farms, Jeff Frank, Frank Farms Incorporated, Harry Gazer, Harry Gazer Farm, Mike Mulder, Mike Mulder's Farm LLC, Bob Kernstock, and Robert Kernstock Farm, and Van Dreschi Farms Incorporated. And whereas, it is important to recognize these farms and their commitment to voluntarily preventing or minimizing agricultural pollution risks. Therefore, be a result that the Bay County Board of Commissioners and the Bay County Executive offer congratulations to Brian Schwab, Jeff Frank, Harry Gazer, Mike Mulders, Bob Kernstock, and Van Dreschi Farms on their accomplishments and commitment to voluntarily change in the agriculture industry. Signed, Ernie Krieger Chair and Board.
Thank you very much. Gentlemen, if you'd come inside here a second, I've got some of the commissioners in your district that would like to share the resolutions with you.
I'm not sure which one is on here. Our, seeing that you're in District Two, which is mine, is a half number. Congratulations, right there. You know, this really is a big deal. Kim Koonin and myself were involved with Peach Falls, the Southern State Park, and realized how important our values, and what you gentlemen are doing in helping the environment directly affects the health of that community. So, I felt that it was important to acknowledge what you guys have achieved and encourage the other farmers in their areas to look at the program and see how it's better than it's already been. So, that's my consent, from my side of the whisper. Farm?
Jack Frank said he was number one in Bay County, so we are number one.
Oh, as a Bay County, and first one in Monterey County. Congratulations.
And Bob Kernstock also. Thank you.
Commissioner Lutz?
Well, in Southern District, we have Wayne Mulders. Thank you for that.
Thank you, sir.
Tom here. In Sixth District, we have Bay Trish Parks, whose family, my family has owned for since, almost since the state park, now, well, you guys have been on for a long time. I think this, I think the biggest accomplishment that I did to figure this stands out is that there's, you know, six farms in Bay County and 33 in the state. I mean, we have like 15, 18 percent of the farms. I mean, you guys have done a wonderful job, and, you know, I think it's just, I think it's great. You know, I mean, it's something you should be well proud of, I'm sure you are, but I know you work hard to maintain what you have, and so, come to now, once you're there, it's a little bit easier, but it takes a lot of work to get there, but it's really thrilled to be up there with you guys all the time. I mean, you love food, and I know you guys produce it. So, I appreciate that.
Soon the snow will be gone, and you have to be in the fields. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Eric, any suggestions?
Sure. Would you like to share any thoughts, or you just want to get out of here?
I would just, you know, like to add that I think, you know, I'd love to be on the record that no one cares about these resources as much as we do. You know, we do cherish them, and anyone that ever questions our integrity probably needs to look at our pocketbook, because it's just as important as it is to tell you. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
I think we have one comment. Our farm, we have five miles of water along the Grand River, and that is important. It does take the run on water. That river is important, and it's a mess. It's a mess. That's why we're here. It's a hurricane. I'm organized. You know I'm organized. I see, I need action. I need action. Anyone else?
I'm just a farmer. You know, that's important, people.
Three, two, we'll take one more. Three, two...
Maybe they should say sugarys. I'm not sure. You're not waiting. Goodbye. I just see it.
Thank you very much, I see.
I was going to the wrong end.
So, we have a Resolution 2015-44. What's your pleasure?
So, what do you guys, what do you farmers?
Support.
All right. Any other discussions? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We move into number two, property assessed clean energy, the PACE program. We have a Resolution 2015-45 that was established for the PACE program. Now, they're looking for authority to be able to sign the contract.
Show more.
Support. Any discussions on PACE? Mr. Hickner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be brief. Andy Levin is here, just in case there's any questions, but I don't think there are. Rick Brzezinski, Crystal, and Sean, I spent a lot of time working with Bob Redman on the details and the issues that have been raised, either by commissioners or by each of those individuals, and I think we've got an ordinance that hopefully will be utilized by local business as an excellent financing tool for energy efficiency, so...
Okay. Anyone else? No further discussion. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the ability today to appoint three individuals to Bay Air Act Behavioral Health Authority. Motion to receive, the seven names on the board would be in order.
Move.
Discussion. No discussion. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We move into number two, property assessed clean energy, the PACE program. We have a Resolution 2015-45 that was established for the PACE program. Now, they're looking for authority to be able to sign the contract.
Show more.
Support. Any discussions on PACE? Mr. Hickner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be brief. Andy Levin is here, just in case there's any questions, but I don't think there are. Rick Brzezinski, Crystal, and Sean, I spent a lot of time working with Bob Redman on the details and the issues that have been raised, either by commissioners or by each of those individuals, and I think we've got an ordinance that hopefully will be utilized by local business as an excellent financing tool for energy efficiency, so...
Okay. Anyone else? No further discussion. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the ability today to appoint three individuals to Bay Air Act Behavioral Health Authority. Motion to receive, the seven names on the board would be in order.
Move.
Discussion. No discussion. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're good. I need the Sergeant of Arms.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Duranchek. Commissioner Duranchek. Eric, would you like to take your stuff down so you can kind of scooch out of here before we do the vote?
Sure, I appreciate that.
You can thank Deanne for not having you stay here all afternoon.
Which your last name, please?
I'll... 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 I'll...
So, it's joint between the Labor Department and Southern Department, so, matter of fact, Road Commission, Drain Commission.
Correct. Okay. Any other discussion needed?
Just, while you're bringing that up, Bobby, I know we discussed that a little bit at Ways and Means. Now, is this going to give us the ability to, you know, be a service that's going to be available to other municipalities or businesses that we will, have we determined how we're going to charge for that?
No, when we do Phase Two, which will be, actually, we'll be able to use the data that we're collecting, yes, the AMB's data, then we'll set up fees for that. But in the meantime, there are other departments, Road Commission, Drain Commission, county that are going to chip in to the second phase.
Joseph.
So, anybody that doesn't chip in to Phase Four is going to have to pay a fee.
All right. There was a handout that came out just a little while ago that talked about fees in a different county that we looked at.
Isabella County does have a schedule set up for charging, you know, for charges where people want to access Lightdar, you know, from 50 bucks to 16,000, 18,000, depending on the whole county. I certainly wouldn't want to commit to that number right now, but, you know, I will bring back, once the data is processed and available, I'll bring it back, and we'll come up with what we think are reasonable charges, and we'd be happy to sell, you know, we would work with folks to the extent possible.
Commissioner Begic.
I had the chance to talk to a resident about water flow and how, oh, there can be an optical, which way the water is going to flow. I think you mentioned something about Fisher Street, where the riverbed used to be where it looks like it might flow one way, but it really flows the other. So, it sounds like this will help identify that, which way the flow is really going.
And, you know, the county just had their, I think, somewhat perceived a greater value in, you know, which way the land flows. I mean, it's just a big help, you know? And it becomes a quarter rather than have a survey crew up doing the whole project.
Very good. Yes, Bob?
After Phase Two is completed, where it's usable data, depending on what the client asks for, the fees would go just to Labor Department, or if they're asking for the Lightdar information, then that would go to pay off the debt and things. It's fine. So, depending on what, what data they're looking for.
Okay. Any other questions for Joe? Commissioner Lutz?
Joe, could you explain to the public what's around here, what's around between Phase One and Phase Two?
Well, and the reason we appreciate the variable rush is that with the topography that's going on with GIS already, the, since the plane's in the air, they can add equipment to do, you know, pulse laser, it's a pulse laser system that actually can read the data. So, we're, the first phase is just to collect the data when the airplane's up in the air while it's taking the photographs. It actually flies a little bit lower when it takes the, when it gets the elevation data. Once the data's collected, the real work is putting it in a format that's acceptable and usable for all parties concerned. One of the, one of the major costs is getting it to a level that's accepted by USGS, US Geological Service. And so, the second phase is taking that collected data and put in a usable format that's accepted by FEMA, USGS, and it's usable for folks like us and the Road Commission, anybody else. And so, that's what that extra, the second phase is putting the data in a format that's usable for pretty much all concerned.
Okay. Anyone else? Joseph, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, further discussion, all those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2015-53. This is the payables from General Housing Center Ridge Arms. I move this resolution.
Support. Discussion. No discussion. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2015-54. Budget adjustments, GIS. I move this resolution.
Support. Discussion. With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Chairman, that's all the business from Ways and Means.
Thank you, Commissioner Coonan. We'll move into Personnel, Human Services. Commissioner Mike Lutz.
Thank you, Commissioner Krieger. Today, I'd like to bring forth Resolution 2015-55, which is the measles vaccination through the Health Department. I so move that.
Support. Discussions. Mike.
The reason I brought this forward and sponsored this, I see a real need for this in Bay County. We're very fortunate here that our vaccination rates are like fourth from the best in the state. But unfortunately, the neighbors that we have, especially around my district, the first district, 21 percent of the school-aged kids in Gladland County, Midland County, 13 percent, Ogumaw County, 14 percent are not vaccinated. So, this is an accident waiting to happen. We've got to do what's called herd protection. We've got to do what's necessary. We need to nudge our legislators to get back to the mandatory vaccinations unless it's for, you know, they have a viable medical reason not to have this. It's to protect our educators, public servants, and their families from measles. This is, and bumps and pertussis, which is whooping cough. We've got, we've had 1,300 cases last year whooping cough. And there's articles, you can search them off for yourself, I provided some to the commissioners. We're up in Traverse City where they, 17 percent of the children in, in one school up there in Academy Charter School were unvaccinated, all right? So, they shut it down for a week, 10 days. I've also asked Joel, if you're here too, and maybe, Joel, if you don't mind, what happens if we do have a case of measles in one of our schools? I think you can expand better than me.
If there is a case where we have a measles, a confirmed measles case at school, the first thing that the Health Department has to do, and we're mandated by law to do this, is do an investigation. And that can be quite time-consuming. We do investigations of all reportable communicable diseases. Some are easier than others, but in case of measles, we would, because it's, it's been years and years, decades since we've had a case of measles here, we would have to determine, one, where they had been exposed to measles, and then, number two, who in their surrounding community, whether it's their family, or their, if it's at a school, or daycare, or any other place where a child or person goes to, who would they be exposing to as well? One of the things that we would probably do, this hasn't happened yet, but because measles is simply a simple disease where you get a rash and a fever, and it goes away, it can have very serious consequences on a person's health, we would probably invoke an exclusion rule that's, that's the exclusion rule that's done part of the Public Health Act, Public Health, Public Act 368. And what that basically does is that an unvaccinated person that has been exposed, or it could be exposed to measles, we would exclude them from a work setting, or school, or daycare. And we would do that until it is reasonably determined that they're no longer at risk to being exposed, or that they would get actually vaccinated themselves. And the thing with that, people think that, you know, that if they don't vaccinate their kids, it's not a big deal, you know? Everybody had chicken pox, or people had measles back in the 1950s. But they don't really take a look at some of the health consequences that happen as a result. And in many cases, with measles, for example, there are serious neurological issues that can take place and even death. And if I've got to save one kid to do that, then I will exclude them from school. And the county is not responsible for daycare bills either, you know, or the lost wages that they get having to stay home with their child as well. So, it's actually, it's really a pretty big effort on behalf of the county, and at quite considerable expense to the county as well.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Begic.
You know, the whooping cough, I know, I've had the cases here, I had a coworker who was exposed to it and had to be treated, and I think there's a, some concern about the vaccination waiting a bit quicker than they expected. I think it used to be like a 10-year, could you speak to that designation?
Sure. Usually, a person, whooping cough, pertussis, is usually offered through, it's called T-NAP or D-TAP, diptheria, tetanus, and pertussis. And normally, when a person gets a tetanus shot, it's included with that. Generally, the rule is about 10 years. But what we found is that it often waits about seven years as well. So, we encourage folks to get a booster shot at about six or seven years.
Okay. Anyone else? No further discussion. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Joel, thank you very much.
The next item of business for the commission is Resolution 2015-56, which is the vacancies at the juvenile home, the recreation, and facilities for the county. I so move that.
Support. Discussion. No discussion. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item of business is Resolution 2015-57, which is the Medical Director Services for SVSU University Clinic through the Health Department. I so move that.
Support. Discussion. No discussion. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
The next and last item, Mr. Chairman, is Resolution 2015-58, which is the agreement with SVSU for Dr. Megan Baruth from the Health Department. I so move that.
Support. Discussions. No discussion. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
That's all for Personnel, Human Services.
Thank you, Commissioner Lutz. We'll move into Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Tilly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Resolution 2015-59, Reports to the County Executive, I so move this resolution.
Support. Discussion. With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
That concludes business from the Boarding Commission, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Tilly. We'll move to Commissioner Von Begic.
Now, so, Resolution 2015-60, to support the Mid Mission Community Action Agency Walk for Warrant on March 21st at 9:00 a.m. at the Midland Community Center for the Arts. I move this resolution.
Support. Discussion. No discussion. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move into reports, county officials. Mr. Hickner, do you have anything?
Nope.
Okay. Very good. Do we have any unfinished business? Any new business? How about miscellaneous? We can get into announcements. We've already taken care of the March appointment of three individuals to Bay Area Behavioral Health. In June, we have the Library Board. It's a one-five-year term. Kristen Rivet is currently there. In October, we have Land Bank Authority, one-at-large representative, which is a three-year term. Department of Human Services Board of Directors, another one-year term. And Board of Canvassers, there's two four-year terms. Walter Rosniak and Matthew Lance. And the note I should mention is the nominees submitted are from both majority parties. In November, we have a Building Authority, two six-year terms. In December, we have Division on Aging Advisory Committee. These are four two-year terms in Districts One, Three, Five, and Seven. We'll move in, and do we have a need for a closed session?
We do not, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. And Commissioner Durant, check.
Motion to adjourn is always in order, sir.
Very good. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned.